Going to go ahead and call the meeting to order and welcome all of our guests. Thank all y'all for coming. Call Row to establish court.
Chairman Clemens.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Josh Hoagland, pastor, appreciate you coming. At Car Rents Baptist Church, Jop is going to do our invocation and EMA Director Phyllis Little is going to do our pledge.
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be here. Before we pray, I just wanted to share with you just a quick moment of word. As we begin to study about things and through the era in which we're living in, you know, I came across a word that was commitment. Tonight, I want us to understand that commitment is the quality or the state of being dedicated to a cause. In God's Word, it's listed that as David approached the place where the Philistines were, he looked and he said, "If they're not a cause." Tonight, as we look across our county and look across the citizens of Coleman County, we see a great cause and we see a giant that stands in the midst. Tonight, I want us to be encouraged of understanding God's power and His providence. Tonight, my prayer is, as we go into a new era, Commissioner Clemens and Chairman Clemens, that the dedication would be unified through our ability to work for one another and through one another. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Lord, we love you and we thank you for all the many blessings of life and Lord, for the opportunity just to join here tonight and Lord, just to take care of the business of Coleman County. Lord, we just pray for wisdom, we pray for guidance and understanding and Lord, patience and consideration. That as we petition this great throne room of grace tonight, Lord, that we would be blessed and anointed, Lord, with wisdom that could lead us and create a better future for us here in Coleman. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity and we thank you for this time together. And Lord, most of all, we thank you for your Son, Jesus, that died on the cross for our sins, that while we were yet sinners, He died. Lord, we just pray for your guidance, your providence, and Lord, for the peace that passes all understanding. And we pray it now in the name that is above all names, that sweet and holy name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Agent, please pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which expands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three, approve the minutes of November 11th, 2020 meeting appropriations, standard tiers, personal actions, payroll, requisitions, and approve all journal entries to be posted.
I make the motion we approve item three.
Motion to a second.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Motion to second, everyone say aye.
Everyone in favor say aye.
Public comments and updates.
Mr. Chairman, I want to invite everybody out tomorrow night at 5:00 at a cutting of the Garland for the Winter Wonderland this year, Sports and Lake Park. So everybody's invited for that 5:00.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I'm Jamie James from Commission on Agent. Dusty Baker couldn't be here tonight, he had a previous engagement. But I know that everybody is aware how much we love our seniors inflating the commission and given the COVID pandemic circumstance, we're not going to be able this year to be able to have the Christmas party. So in lieu of that, we have been trying to do all we can do for our seniors. They're isolated, they, you know, our centers are closed. So with that being said, in partnership with Doug at Park, at Sports and Lake Park, we are going to have a Winter Wonderland at Sports and Lake for all our seniors, 60 and older. There's December 18th, 19th, and 20th waived in all of the, you know, there won't be a charge for that. And hopefully, we might, and my director doesn't know this, but we might do maybe a little bit of a surprise on their, their going in, just something to maybe lift them up because a lot of them are really struggling with our centers being closed and really no idea until this is over when we might can open up. So they're great, it is a blessing to serve them and we're going to do all we can do to lift them up through the holiday season and this pandemic. So we're just excited about the Winter Wonderland and we'd like to thank Sports and Lake for their partnership and allowing us to do this for them.
We love our seniors very much. Did everybody get the dates on that?
And if anybody is in question, anybody can call if you have grandparents or parents that, you know, call. We're going through our open enrollment right now, but we've got extra phone power, we'll be glad to give the information. And two, and I probably shouldn't add this, but I'm going to, you know, December 7th, we're taking appointment only this year because of the epidemic. We've got some appointments still available to make, you know, to go over their drug plans, part D drug plans. So if you know anybody that haven't, we've got a wonderful team of ladies that do a great job and Medicare is very confusing to old people. Older people just have a struggle because they get so much information. So we've got some extra people working and some appointments left. We're trying to work in people because normally we're able to see a lot more, but we've had to do appointments, which has worked out great for them. It ensures their safety in and out more so than ever, you know, because there is the flu season as well. So we're hoping that we're going to get to continue doing appointments. So if you know anybody, remind them because, you know, after September 7th, they're stuck and if their new plans don't pay for the next year, they can't do anything about it until the following year. So if you know anybody that still, still haven't, hasn't done their drug plans, you know, tell them to call us, we'll work them in. We'll do anything we can to help them.
Thank you so much.
Dusty warned us, warned us that you might, we might have to cut your mic off.
I know because I mean, I know a lot of these people and they ought to know I love them. But I'm going to sit down.
Doug, we want to appreciate you and Dusty working together on this because this is such a great event for our seniors. Thank y'all so much.
Yeah, and another thing too, wanted to say something about Randall and his crew and the part of people in general, because I think you've got people from OHV, from Smith Lake and everywhere. It's been a fair put this together and every year, this thing has turned out great and it's been a good thing for our community and voice. I think it's going to really be great that our seniors can do this.
Absolutely, Doug, your people and I, where did I go? Your people have helped, I mean, they are being phenomenal to help us. They are just a great bunch of people to work with and we cherish y'all being where you are. Y'all helped us more than you'll know.
Thank y'all. Any other public comments or updates before we move on? We'll move to number five, new business aid recognition, Philip Patterson retiring after 25 years of service to Coleman County Commission.
Well, I hate that Judy isn't here tonight to present this. Is Philip here?
Come on up to him.
Look, everybody has these masks on.
Hey, we appreciate his family also. Before, you know, before we, also before we give this, give it in the middle. There you go. You know, I want to say that Philip, every time we have called him and asked him to do anything, he's always just been over backwards to work with us and he's done a fantastic job and, you know, I just can't say enough about his service with the county. I mean, with the Sheriff's Department, then he left there, came over here and was our sanitation officer slash everything officer because every time I had problem with people on right of ways and stuff like that, parked in the wrong place, I'd call him and he'd take care of it and it was a done deal and I never had to worry about it. So I just want to thank Philip for helping us so much in the commission.
Sure. And I want to thank Philip, me and him friends, how long now?
Long time.
Thirty years.
It's been a long time.
It's truly been a honor, you know, working with you all the years that I've worked, waiting for the opportunity to do this, you know, all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
B, proclamation Farm City Week.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have the proclamation. If you'd like for me to read it.
Yes, ma'am.
For Farm City Week.
Is she reading?
Yes.
There you are.
We'll come up with you, Mr. Speaker.
I apologize.
No, no, that's fine.
Okay. For Farm City Week, it says, whereas since 1955, during the week leading up to Thanksgiving, Americans have observed National Farm City Week to express gratitude for the bounty with which God has blessed our land and to recognize the achievements of the farmers, rural townspeople, and city residents who make our nation's agricultural production and distribution system so successful. This mutually beneficial cooperation helps ensure our country's well-being and, whereas America's farmers are stewards of human health, growing grain, fruit, vegetables, milk, honey, meat, poultry, and fish for our meals, producing cotton and other fiber for our clothing, and cultivating trees for lumber. They provide food, shelter, and clothing to sustain life. And whereas, American farmers produce agricultural products to sustain life throughout the world, accepting the challenge to feed nine billion people by 2050. They also play a significant role in preserving natural resources and sustaining our economy. And whereas, the bounty produced by American farmers is dependent upon cooperative partnerships between urban and rural communities to supply, sell, and deliver finished products, and these farm-city collaborations help maintain and increase our nation's agricultural production and improve the quality of life of people throughout the world. And whereas, the purpose of Farm City Week is to bring about a better understanding between rural and urban people by increasing their knowledge and appreciation of each other as partners in progress because it's important to recognize the value of this successful partnership and celebrate its role in the future of Coleman County, our municipalities, our state, and our nation. In witness thereof, we, the undersigned, do hereby jointly proclaim, November 19th through 25th, through the 25th, 2020, as Farm City Week, and urge our citizens to recognize the accomplishments of our farmers and city residents who cooperate to nurture, nourish, preserve, and sustain life. Thank you so much. Thank you for all you do.
Chairman, I want to say something.
I just want to thank y'all because this is very important to me and to Doris Patterson, who is Farm City for Coleman County. Without Doris, we couldn't do this and she'd probably be here tonight, but she's still quarantined. Or she's not quarantined, she's just not, still not feeling the best in the world. So, so Carrie, I hope you don't get the bad, the bad part of it. But thank y'all because it does take a partnership between the farmer and the city people because if the farmer grows it, if the city people don't buy it, you know, there's no, there's no need. So anyway, thank y'all.
And a lot of our products, a lot of our products are bought locally, you know, from our, some of the things you eat in restaurants, you know, come from local departments and that's.
A lot of our farmers are delivering to the restaurants here.
That's right.
You've seen more of it.
You're going to have to get here in the middle.
Get here in the middle, okay. Then I'll take it and say y'all.
Thank you, Sherri.
Thanks for using that. Thank you.
I make the motion we approve item B.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item C, authorize Chairman Clemens to sign agency agreement with the Secretary of State for payment of postage on voter notification.
Mr. Chairman, that is, the State, the Secretary of State's office on behalf of Coleman County will send out the cards and will knock forth the addresses to purge the voter list. So that's what we need your signature for.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item C.
I'll second that motion.
Everyone say aye.
Aye.
D, resolution 2021-01, payment of postage on voter notification.
Mr. Chairman, that is just a resolution stating that the Secretary of State will pay the postage, but ultimately, the money will come from a separate pot of money, for lack of a better word, that's set aside for each county to purge the voter list.
Make the motion we approve item D.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Everyone say aye.
Aye.
E, resolution 2021-02, rebuild Alabama Act Grant.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners and citizens spoke about in the business meeting, it's a grant we're going to apply for, for $250,000 on the rebuild Alabama grant. I've been working with the county engineer and we should, with your approval of that resolution, we should get that in either Friday or Monday. And like I said, that doesn't compete with any other grants that we put in on the rebuild Alabama and we would not have matched that.
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item A.
I'll second that motion.
Everyone say aye.
Aye.
L, resolution 2021-03 to amend resolution 2000-16 and resolution 2000-64 to allow a private roll-off sanitation companies to do business in Coleman County.
This, this resolution would only allow, allow for the use of private roll-offs and it wouldn't affect any other parts of our sanitation. But I make a motion we approve item L.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to be able to sign this motion at this time.
I'll make a motion to second. Do everyone want to say aye?
Aye.
G, amend October 14th, 2020 minutes to adjust total received from sanitation trucks sold to Ingram Equipment Company from 195,000 to 190,000.
No one's out here. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were earlier, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that is a $5,000 reduction from, originally got quoted because one of the trucks wound up not selling at all even so. So it's $5,000, just an adjustment.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item G.
I'll second that motion.
Everyone say aye.
Aye.
H, authorize Chairman Clemens to sign side agreement with FLW Pro Series Fishing Terminal.
I know, I need to, so burning it back on. Mr. Chairman, this was already approved, we just had to hammer out the specifics of the contract and now that we've got that worked out, we just need your signature, please.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Do we know when that term takes place?
No, it's in March, 2020. Do you remember exactly?
I don't remember exactly, yeah, in March 2020.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Make the motion we approve item H.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Everyone say aye.
Aye.
I, authorize Chairman Clemens to sign an agreement waiver and consent with a law firm of Baker Donaldson for filing of CARES Act reimbursement.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that is just authorization we need to sign so that we can be in agreement with the law firm to handle just specifically the reimbursement under the CARES Act and waiver of any conflicts, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item A.
I'll second that motion.
Everyone say aye.
Aye.
J, authorize Chairman Clemens to certify CARES Act reimbursement for public safety personnel.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there's a new certification that we need to update with your signature. Also, we are going to file for reimbursement for public safety personnel and we are basing that reimbursement on information that was provided from the sheriff's office.
Make the motion we approve item G.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
K, authorize cars to purchase 14 replacement buses for 2021, total cost 954,268 dollars with a local match of 95,426 eighty and additional 9,034 bus cameras.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have 14, 20, 13 buses that need to be replaced. So we will, upon approval, we will be purchasing the 14 buses this year. The reason for the extra 9,030 dollars is there was, for safety reasons, we wanted backup camera and also a fourth camera inside that looks out front of the bus. Because of the CARES Act, we were able to get, buy the first bus, pay 20% match on the first bus, and the second bus, we didn't have to pay anything. So that's why the match was so small.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Basically getting everything for about 10% of the cost.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item K.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
L, authorize Chairman Clemens, EMA Director Phyllis Little, to sign Homeland Security Grant, total amount of 29,180.
Yes, sir, this is 100% reimbursable grant that will allow us to upgrade some equipment and furniture in the emergency operations center.
Make the motion we approve item L.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
L, authorize Chairman Clemens, EMA Director Phyllis Little, to sign Homeland Security Grant, total amount of 29,180.
Yes, sir, this is 100% reimbursable grant that will allow us to upgrade some equipment and furniture in the emergency operations center.
Make the motion we approve item L.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
E, authorize Chairman Clemens, EMA Director Phyllis Little, to sign the State Mortuary Operations Grant, total amount 12,000.
Yes, sir, this is our annual Department of Homeland Security Grant that provides training for our volunteers that make up the State Mortuary Operations Team. And it is 100% reimbursable.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item M.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
N, authorize maintenance supervisor Chris Seers to purchase all equipment to upgrade restrooms and mitigation of COVID-19.
Do you want to say something on that, Carrie, or Emily, so they'll know, come over and do it in there?
I can sure paint a possible.
That's all right.
Okay, so what this is regarding is motion sensors for paper towel dispensers, toilets that will flush without you having to touch them, and faucets as well, just to update so that a lot less transmission going on. And there's a lot of traffic here in the courthouse, so trying to reduce it as much as we can.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem.
Make the motion we approve item N.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O, consider Water Department to have a rate study done by St. John and Associates.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the city has indicated it will be possibly at somewhere around a 40% per thousand gallon increase and the director of the Water Department has asked that we have a rate study done to update our numbers based on new revenues and costs through St. John's and Associates. I recommend we do the rate study.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item M.
I'll second that motion.
Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
P, consider leasing the Coleman County Ag Center to River Gun Show.
Mr. Chairman, this is, for a gun show, it'd be the April 21st, 22nd, and 23rd at Coleman County Ag Center.
Make the motion we approve item P.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Q, consider payment to Johnson Technologies for dispatch battery cabinets services for the sheriff's office, cost 5,094.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item Q.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
R, consider extensions of employees' vacation time to February 28th, 2020. That shit, wouldn't that be 2021?
2021.
2021.
It sure would. They changed it to 2020.
I got it, yeah.
Right. Yeah, and we had a lot of people, Chris is not here, I don't think, but we had a lot of people that, you know, had worked all year and built leave and it was going to push them to use all their leave and it spread out amongst all of our departments. So we wanted to extend that time to give them a little more flexibility to use their leave at a time maybe when the county is a little bit slower, you know. So I make a motion we approve item R.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A, consider approval and renewal of property insurance with travelers.
Chairman, this is our renewal of the property insurance with travelers through our local agent, Smith and Gray. It's for 645,525 dollars, it's basically a 6% increase. I recommend we renew the policy.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item S.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
T, consider payment of NarcoG for dues for physical year 2020 in the amount of 56,299.
This is just our annual dues to NarcoG. It's something we do every year to be a part of the, part of NarcoG. Make the motion we approve item T.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
U, you consider the purchase of six triaxle dump trucks for the road department. Cost 942,030, the cost per truck's 157,005.
I ask, Mr. Chairman, this is the annual rotation of our six triaxle dump trucks and the sale of the prior six dump trucks will cover or exceed the purchase of these new trucks.
Thank you, Brian.
And I know we mention this every time, yeah, but, but it's, these, these trucks, we drive them for a year at no cost to the, to the taxpayers because we turn around and sell them.
It's a federal tax exemption.
Right, because of the federal tax exemption, then, then we're able to turn around and sell them for more than actually what we paid for them after we drive them a year. So this is a really good program for, to benefit the taxpayers and benefit our road department, driving new equipment.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item U.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
V, Commissioner Marksman to appoint Darla West to the Department of Human Resources Board, replacing Cynthia Dodd for a six-year term, expiring 515.
Yeah, I talked, I talked to Ms. West and she's agreed to do this. I think her husband is actually on this board also, so that'll work out real good for them and I think she would be an appropriate candidate for this because of other affiliations that she has. And so I make a motion we approve item V.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
W, bid number 1293, extension traffic sign, for traffic signs.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we had satisfactory service from this bid and we, I do recommend the extension of this bid.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item M.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
X, bid number 1294, extension JC Cheek for traffic strike.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do recommend the extension of this bid as well.
I make the motion we approve item X.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Y, bid number 1316, extension McPherson Companies and WH Thomas Oil Company for motor oil, hydraulics, fluid, transmission fluid, and grease.
Mr. Chairman, I do recommend the extension of this bid also.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, Y.
Second that motion.
All in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Six will be the next commission work session will be Tuesday, December 15th. Six will be the next commission work session will be Tuesday, December 15th, 2020, at 4:30 PM in the commission meeting room. Seven, the next commission meeting will be Tuesday, December 15th, 2020, at 6:00 PM in the commission meeting room, and the meeting is adjourned.
I make a motion we adjourn.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Aye.